A couple of announcements. First, in case you forget, Tuesday, February 15th is Voting Day. And it is at the Christ the King Church and not the Kowachnut School. Tonight, we have two microphones. One is in the front and one will get to you if you stand up and raise your hand. Town Clerk Debbie Daimy will come to you with a microphone. They're all wireless. And as always, I ask you to please state your name and your address for the record as it helps. All right. Without further ado, in the name of the -- Debbie, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll do the special town meeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and summons the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the 7th day of May, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. for the following purposes: to act on the articles contained in the following warrant. This is the special town meeting. Article 1, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer some of money from revenue available for appropriation to the snow and ice account or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It was a pleasure to see you.
Good to be back.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $160,000 from revenue available for appropriation to the snow and ice account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 2 by a vote of 6 to 10.
Okay. Any discussion on Article 1 of the special town meeting? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 1 say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 2, see if the town will vote to appropriate $65,000 to the Kids Club Enterprise Fund Capital Expense Account for the purpose of capital improvement expenses associated with the enterprise and to fund said appropriation by transfer from the retained earnings of the enterprise or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $65,000 from the retained earnings of Kids Club Enterprise Fund to the Enterprise Fund Capital Expense Account for the purpose of capital improvement expenses associated with the enterprise.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 2 by a vote of 6 to 10.
Okay. Any discussion of Article 2? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 2 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 3. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds $75,000 to the Human Resources Accrued Benefit Account or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $75,000 from the revenue available for appropriation to the Human Resource Source Accured Benefit Account.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 3 by a vote of 6 to 10.
Any discussion on Article 3? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 4. I need a nine-tenths vote on this. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $675.35 from revenue available for appropriation to pay previous fiscal year compensation as follows. John Phelan, retroactive payment, $78.77. Tori Montesey, settlement agreement, $596.58. Or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahalan.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $675.35 from revenue available for appropriation to the prior yearly salary account for allocation as specified in Article 4.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 4 by a vote of 6 to 10.
Any discussion on Article 4 as read? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 4 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 5. See if the town will appropriate and transfer pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 44b, Section 6, to reserve from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted for appropriation reserve the following amounts: $5,504, 10% open space recreation purposes; $5,504, 10% for historic purposes; $5,504, 10% for community housing purposes or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Gottlieb.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44b, Section 6, to reserve from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted for appropriation reserve the following amounts: $5,504, 10% open space recreation purposes; $5,504, 10% for historic purposes; and $5,504, 10% for community housing purposes.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 5 by a vote of 6 to 10.
Any discussion on Article 5? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 5 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 6. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $167,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, 10% affordable community housing reserve pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 44b, Section 5, for the purpose of funding the Habitat for Humanity Scattered Site Mashpee Community Housing Project, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $167,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, 10% affordable community housing reserve pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44b, Section 5, for the purpose of funding the Habitat for Humanity Scattered Site Mashpee Community Housing Project, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Do I have a second? Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 6 by a vote of 4 to 1 with one extension.
Okay. Any discussion on Article 6? Yes, sir. Where's Debbie? Microphone right down here. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Prosek, 12 Great River Road. I'd like just a little clarification on who's going to receive these houses. There's three houses being proposed.
Right behind you. Come down and introduce yourself.
Mary Wagan, 35, Asshument Road. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board of N.A.S.O. and the Planning Board's representative to the Community Preservation Committee. These will be built and lotteried off by Habitat for Humanity. So, there'll be an open lottery that people will have to apply to. The households will have to be income-eligible and be able to get a mortgage for the affordable price these units will be sold at.
All right. I understand that. My question is, will these be Mashpee residents, current Mashpee residents that will be getting these three homes? Let me finish. My understanding is that only one of these three will go to a current Mashpee resident. Is that true?
Ah, she's looking for the --
I am here representing Habitat for Humanity. And was your question whether one or all three have to be Mashpee residents?
My question is whether all three are going to go to Mashpee or only one.
No, there is no requirement that it has to be Mashpee residents.
Just go ahead and answer my question. Will all three of these go to Mashpee residents?
All right.
Not necessarily.
Then why does this article explanation say that these three additional Mashpee families will receive these homes?
All right.
They will be Cape -- can I just say, I mean, they're --
Yeah, but let's go to the mic. You guys are going to have to take turns with the microphone. So, go ahead. Ask the question again.
Okay, I'm sorry. My question is, why does this article state that all three of these homes will be going to Mashpee families if, in fact, you're not intending to give all three to Mashpee families? It's written up so that everybody thinks all three of these homes will belong to Mashpee people.
We'll go back to the Director.
Mary Wagan, again, I just want to ask the representative from Habitat, is there a local preference for any of these units?
The first criteria is whether they're eligible, income eligibility. The last lottery we had were 59 people in Marston's Mills. They were not all Marston's Mills current residents. So, is there a preference? No, it really comes down to who, out of all of the applicants, who is eligible. And then it's a lottery. But it's a lottery. So, all of those who are eligible go into, and then out of those who are eligible, then it is a lottery. It is by chance. I don't believe it is not Habitat's policy. I believe it is also not the national organization's policy. And it's hard to pick, to give preference to people when somebody else is eligible.
All right. Well, we can't have this conversation all night. I'll go to you, the Director behind you. I'll let you ask one more question and we'll move on.
So, typically, what happens in a lottery, if you want to increase the chances that your local residents get it, get an opportunity for one of the units, you ask the lottery administrator for local preference. And I don't, I'd like to ask through the moderated town council if it's too late to request that Habitat for Humanity have a local preference in this lottery for these units as an amendment to this article.
Mr. Gottlieb.
I just want to point out that either the article nor the board selectmen or the explanation provided by the Community Preservation Committee specify anything about a residence requirement. The FinCom recommendation raises that issue, but the article does not. So, there's nothing in the article that says that it's a preference.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that discussion or the explanation for everybody to read in this town gives the impression from FinCom that all three homes will go to Mashpee residents. And we now know that that's not the case. Thank you.
All right. That is not the case, though. It's open to anybody who applies. All right. Any other questions on Article 6? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 6 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article 7. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $32,500 from the Community Preservation Fund, 10% historic reserve pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 44b, Section 5, for the purposes of funding the Mashpee American Revolutionary War Memorial Project and the development of a conceptual design, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $32,500 from the Community Preservation Fund, 10% historic reserve pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44b, Section 5, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee American Revolutionary War Memorial Project and development of a conceptual design, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 7 by a vote of 6 to 10.
Okay. I've been handed a note that we have 150 registered voters present. Any discussion on Article 7? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 7 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Take a motion to adjourn the special town meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Greetings to the constables of the town. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and summons the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the 7th day of May, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. for the following purposes: to act on the articles contained in the following warrant. Okay. Article 1, see if the town will vote to accept the reports of the town officers or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to accept the reports of the town officers.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 1 by a vote of 6 to 10.
Any discussion on accepting the reports? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 1 say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 2, see if the town will vote to fix the salaries of the following elected officers as provided in Chapter 41, Section 108 of the Massachusetts General Law's for the period of July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, and further, to see if the town will vote and appropriate raise and/or transfer a sum of money to defray the town's expenses for the ensuing fiscal year according to the following line item budget with the maximum amount to be appropriated as shown in the column entitled Fiscal Year 2019 Department Request, see Omnibus Budget or take any other action related there, too. Now, for you who have been here before, I read off the last column one at a time. Anybody who wants to have a question about it, just yell out "hold" and I will get back to it at the end. If I don't hear anything, we keep moving. All right? So, we start with something near and dear to me. Moderator. Salary number one, $200. Total, $200. Selectmen. Salary elected, $15,500. Salary wage, $369,822. Expense, $38,500. Legal, engineering, and consulting, $310,000. Total selectmen, $733,822. Finance committee. Reserve fund, $100,000. Expense, $65,000. Total, $165,000. Town accountant, salary wage, $256,280. Expense, $2,790. Total, $259,070. I have no holds on that page. Assessors, salary appointed, $3,000. Salary wage, $269,67. Expense, $7,800. Assessors total, $279,867. Treasurer tax collector, salary wage, $246,441. Expense, $52,200. Debt service, $2,500. Foreclosure, $10,000. Total, $311,141. Human resources, salary wage, $308,363. Expense, $87,184. Total human resources, $395,547. Information technology, salary wage, $254,388. Expense, $242,503. Equipment replacement, $27,000. Total, $523,891. GIS, salary wage, $73,800. Expense, $10,037. Total, $83,827. Town clerk, salary elected, $79,875. Salary wage, $87,177. Expense, $9,350. Total town clerk, $176,402. I have no holds on that page. Elections and registration, salary wage, $55,703. Expense, $16,300. Total, $72,300. Conservation, salary wage, $200,512. Expense, $4,764. Herring expense, $500. Total conservation, $205,776. Natural resources, salary wage, $462,987. Expense, $71,200. Propagation, $80,000. Natural resources total, $614,187. Planning board, expense, $7,765. Total, $7,765. Planning department, salary wage, $112,355. Expense, $5,300. Total planning department, $117,655. Town hall, expense, $264,000. Total, $264,000. Police, salary wage, $3,725,050. Expense, $317,681. Dispatcher, salary wage, $478,639. Total police, $4,521,370. I have no holds. Fire, salary wage, $3,416,595. Expense, $476,961. Total fire, $3,893,556. Building inspector, salary wage, $326,63. Expense, $17,325. Total building inspector, $343,388. Tree warden, expense, $425. Total, $425. School, budget, $21,381,532. Total, $21,381,532. DPW, salary wage, $2,569,43. Building and grounds, $1,204,519. Total DPW, $4,552,554. Snow and ice, expense, $116,570. Total, $116,570. Street lighting, expense, $28,000. Total, $28,000. Transfer station, expense, $859,600. Hold on the street lighting? Okay. Expense, $800, uh, transfer station, expense, $859,685. I have a hold. Total, $859,685. Sewer commission, expense, $35,200. Total, $35,200. I have one hold on that page. Cemetery, $15,000. Total, $15,000. Health. Something about cemetery and health being next to each other. Salary appointed, $3,000. Salary wage, $238,842. Expense, $23,590. Total health, $265,432. Council on Aging, salary wage, $246,366. Expense, $37,492. Total council on aging, $283,858. Veterans, expense, $105,000. Membership, $35,500. Total veterans, $140,500. Human services, salary wage, $72,66. Expense, $51,00910. Total human services, $123,976. Library, salary wage, $478,759. Expense, $189,073. Total library, $667,832. Recreation, salary wage, $266,31. Expense, $32,000. Total recreation, $298,031. I have no holds on that page. Historical, temp wage, $9,000. Expense, $7,030. Total historical, $16,030. Cultural council, expense, $90. Total, $90. Principal inside two and a half, $1,198,545. Principal outside two and a half, $605,000. Interest inside two and a half, $182,166. Interest outside two and a half, $170,425. Temp borrow inside two and a half, $150,000. Temporary borrowing outside two and a half, $220,000. Retirement expense, $3,025,933. Unemployment, $40,000. Medical insurance, $8,385,320. Group insurance, $14,500. Medicare, $453,318. Town insurance, $830,640. Grand total, $57,029,39. All right. I'd like to go back to line 53, which was the transfer station. I had a hold.
Jonathan Levitt Par 3 corp. When, last year, when the selectmen instituted a fee for recycling for those who did not buy a permit for the, you know, for the recycling station as a whole, they projected about 800, and I think they got something under 300. So, my question is, the long-term goal of the transfer station has been to be self-sufficient, not be supported by taxes. So, my question is, how much of the, how much of the total expenses of the transfer station were supported by town taxes last year, what's projected under the current budget or whatever is approved? I know there's, there was a difference between the request and the transfer for next year. Are we going, are we aiming towards the self-sufficiency or is it going, is the actual taxes for, you know, tax support for the transfer station actually increasing rather than decreasing?
Okay. Anybody here from the board of health want to tackle that? DPW Director.
I don't have those figures with me. It's averaged about 15% subsidy through taxes. This upcoming fiscal year, it'll be a little bit higher than that, but I don't have the exact figures with me. I'm happy to communicate those to Jonathan at a later date.
Did that come close to answering your question?
I think I have my email address. I'll be happy to get the information and I hope to also send it to the newspaper or something that so other people can understand just what's happening. I think this is, I think this is critical because the Mashpee, we had, I was on the Mashpee Recycling Committee for a number of years and selected and did not even pay any attention to a recommendation of pay as you throw, which at, which at, in Sandwich, they're very happy with, and I think by now, the transfer station is, if not close, if not self-sufficient, pretty close to it. So, I'd like to see if the way of just raising the fees is going to make it. I don't think it will because it's, the more you raise the fees, the less people are actually going to be using this station, not more.
Okay. And I'll release that hold and take a motion on Article 2.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Cahalan.
I move that the town vote to fix the salaries of the elected officers as specified under the columns entitled Town Manager Recommendation in line items 2 and 24 of the ominous budget as distributed to the voters at the town meeting and further the town to fray the expenses defray the expenses for the ensuring fiscal year by appropriation, those amounts shown under columns entitled Town Manager Recommendation, and that to fund said appropriation, town raise and appropriate fifty-three million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-four, and further, appropriate and transfer from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to line item forty-two, fifty thousand dollars to line item forty-three, ninety-five thousand to line item seventy-two, three thousand, eight hundred to line item seventy-four, and seventeen thousand, six hundred and five dollars to line item seventy-six. Appropriate and transfer from the hotel motel receipts account, twenty-five thousand dollars to line item eighty. Appropriate and transfer from the conservation revolving account, ten thousand dollars to line item twenty-nine. Appropriate and transfer from the shellfish receipts reserved for appropriation account, twenty-five thousand to line item thirty-four. Appropriate and transfer from the cemetery receipts reserved for appropriation account, fifteen thousand dollars to line item fifty-five. Appropriate, appropriate and transfer from the street vetement receipts reserved for appropriation account, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to line item seventy-two, eighty-eight thousand, twenty-five dollars to line item seventy-four, and eighty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars to line item seventy-six. Appropriate and transfer from septic vetement receipts reserved for appropriation account, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars to line item seventy-two, eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars to line item fifty-seven, and appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Act Fund, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars to line item seventy-two, and fifty-three thousand, four hundred to line item seventy-four, and appropriate and transfer from the revenue available for appropriation, one million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to line item eighty.
Wait a second. Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a two-way vote of quarter zero with one abstention.
Okay. Any discussion on Article Two, known as the Omnibus Budget? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Two say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article Three. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of one million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred from available funds to various department capital accounts, as specified in the chart accompanying this article, or take any other action related thereto. Same thing, capital improvements, if you want me to hold, just yell out after I read it. Uh, Police, ten police vehicles, year two of three, one hundred and forty-four thousand. Four police vehicles, year one of three, sixty-four thousand, four hundred. Total Police, two hundred and eight thousand, four hundred. Fire, fire engine tanker, three hundred and fifty thousand. Purchased one ambulance, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Total Fire, six hundred and twenty-five thousand. DPW, replacement of nineteen ninety-seven large loader, year one of three, seventy-five thousand. Replacement of two thousand and three Echo Van, thirty thousand. Replacement of nineteen ninety-six Wood Chipper, sixty thousand. Replacement of two thousand Cat Skid Steer, fifty-five thousand. Replacement of two thousand and eleven Ford F-350, forty-five thousand. Total DPW, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Info Technology, permitting software, eighty-four thousand. Total IT, eighty-four thousand. Recreation, ADA compliant van, year one of three, sixteen thousand, three hundred. Total Recreation, sixteen thousand, three hundred. Natural Resources, Harbor Master Boat, fifty thousand. Total Natural Resources, fifty thousand. Planning and Construction, flooring replacement, fifty thousand. Storage Garage and Parking at DPW, hundred and twenty-five thousand. Total Planning and Construction, one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Total Capital Appropriation, one million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred. No holds. Mr. Gottlieb.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to line item four. Appropriate and transfer from the Recreation Revolving Fund, sixteen thousand, three hundred dollars to line item eleven. Appropriate and transfer from the Waterways Improvement Fund, fifty thousand dollars to line item twelve. And appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, one million, eighty-two thousand, four hundred dollars to the remaining various department capital accounts, itemized in Article Three.
Wait a second. Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Three by a vote of quarter zero with one abstention.
Okay. Any discussion on Article Three? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Three say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Four. See if the town will vote to approve the annual regional school district budget for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of fourteen million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, and further, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, eighty-eight thousand, three ninety-nine, to meet its share of the cost of operation and maintenance of the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eighteen, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve the annual regional school district budget for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of fourteen million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, and further, to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine, to meet its share of the cost of operation and maintenance of the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eighteen.
Wait a second. Yeah. Motion made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of six to none.
Any discussion on Article Four? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Four is moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Five. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of money from revenue available for appropriation to the other post-employment benefits irrevocable trust fund, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from the revenue available for appropriation to the other post-employment benefits irrevocable trust fund.
Wait a second.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of six to none.
Any discussion on Article Five? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Five is moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Six. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer for the, the sum of one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five thirty-seven, from revenue available for appropriation to be deposited into the Capital Stabilization Fund, or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, from revenue available for appropriation to be deposited in the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Second. Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of six to none.
Any discussion on Article Six? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Six say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Seven. See if the town will vote to authorize the total expenditures for the following revolving funds pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eighteen, to be expended in accordance with the bylaw establishing said revolving funds, heretofore approved, or take any other action related thereto. Fund fiscal year two thousand and nineteen authorization, Recreation, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, Library, twenty thousand, Senior Center, fifteen thousand, Historical Commission, two thousand and five hundred. Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the total expenditures for the respective revolving funds identified in Article Seven pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, to be expended in accordance with the bylaw establishing said revolving funds here, herefore approved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Um, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of six to none.
Discussion on Article Seven. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seven is moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Eight. See if the town will vote to appropriate five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars to establish a budget for the PEG Access and Cable-related Fund for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, with said appropriation be funded through the current balance of the fund, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars, to establish a budget for the PEG Access and Cable-related Fund for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, with said appropriation be funded through the current balance of the fund.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. Uh, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eight by a vote of six to none.
Any discussion on Article Eight? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eight is moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Nine. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, six hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, to provide for road improvement projects under the Chapter Ninety program, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate six hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars to provide the road improvement projects in and for the town, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter Ninety of Massachusetts General Laws, and to authorize the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow said sum of six hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, under the, under and pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven and Eight, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Nine by a vote of six to none.
Any discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none. I need two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Nine is moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Ten. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of thirty-nine thousand for revenue available for appropriation to the Department of Natural Resource Sources, to fund the third and final year of a monitoring contract with the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth, for monitoring water quality associated with shellfish aquaculture in Pappanessa Bay and Wequod Bay, and its effectiveness in reducing water column nutrient concentrations, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of thirty-nine thousand dollars from the revenue available for appropriation to the Department of Natural Resources, to fund the third and final year of the monitoring contract with the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth, for monitoring the water quality associated with the shellfish aquaculture in Pappanessa Bay and Wequod Bay, and its effectiveness in reducing water column nutrient concentrations.
Wait a second.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Ten by a vote of six to none.
Any discussion on Article Ten? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Ten is moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Eleven. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of nineteen thousand dollars from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Great River, Little River Extension Account, for the purpose of conducting an engineering survey of the channel's area from the center of Wequod Bay to the existing Little River Channel, then continuing from the existing Little River Channel to the entrance of the Hamblin Pond, and extending from the end of the existing Little River Channel to the end of the Great River, and entrance to Yahoo Pond, or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of nineteen thousand dollars from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Great River, Little River Extension Account, for the purpose of conducting an engineering survey of the channel areas identified in Article Eleven.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eleven by a vote of six to none.
Discussion on Article Eleven. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eleven is moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Twelve. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Department of Natural Resources Equipment Expense Account, for the purpose of purchasing equipment hardware for maintenance of the waterways by the Department of Natural Resources Harbor Master, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Department of Natural Resources Equipment Expense Account, for the purpose of purchasing equipment hardware for the maintenance of the waterways by the Department of Natural Resources slash Harbor Master.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twelve by a vote of quarter zero with one abstention.
Any discussion on Article Twelve? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Twelve is moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Thirteen. See if the town will vote to appropriate four hundred and five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for the operation of the Kids Club Enterprise Fund for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. Such sums to be raised from four hundred and five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars in receipts of the enterprise, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Gottlieb.
Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Kids Club Enterprise Fund for FY two thousand and nineteen. Personnel, three hundred and five thousand, seventy dollars. Benefits, forty thousand dollars. Operating expenses, sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, for a total, four hundred and five, three hundred and twenty dollars. Such sums to be raised from four hundred and five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars in receipts of the enterprise.
Wait a second.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Thirteen by a vote of six to none.
Discussion on Article Thirteen. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Thirteen is moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Fourteen. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, Community Preservation Fund Estimated Revenue, Revenues, to sum of forty thousand dollars to Community Preservation Committee Administrative and Operating Expense Account pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four B, Section Five, including any necessary costs related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of forty thousand dollars from the FY two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund Estimated Revenues to the Community Preservation Committee Administrative and Operative, Operating Expense Account, including any necessary costs related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Fourteen by a vote of six to none.
Discussion on Article Fourteen. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Fourteen is moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Articles Fifteen. See if the town will vote to continue participation in the community septic management program in the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, for the purpose of making loans to residents of the town for repairing and/or upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to continue participation in the community septic management program and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, for the purpose of making loans to residents of the town for repairing and/or upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including all costs incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Fifteen by a vote of six to none.
Any discussion on Article Fifteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Fifteen All those in favor of Article Fifteen has moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Take a motion to dispense with Article Sixteen reading.
So moved.
And seconded. All right. Ms. Sherman.
I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectment and/or the Conservation Commission to acquire title to a portion of that certain parcel of land designated on Mashpee Assessors Map Forty-five, as Block Fifty dash zero, located at one oh three Meeting House Road in Mashpee, Barnstable County, Massachusetts, consisting of three and seventy-two one-hundredths acres, more or less, as specifically shown on the plan of land dated April thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, prepared for Mark and Donna Lopez by Cape and Islands Engineering, the plan, by purchase from or exchange with the owners therefore, for open space, conservation and passive recreation purposes, consistent with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Eight C, and Article Ninety-seven of the Amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and in consideration of said acquisition, to authorize the Selectment and/or Conservation Commission to transfer and convey by sale or exchange a portion of that certain parcel of town-owned land designated on the Mashpee Assessors Map Forty-five, Block Nine dash zero, located at one twenty-seven Meeting House Road in Mashpee, Barnstable County, Massachusetts, consisting of three and seventy-two one-hundredths acres, more or less, as shown on the said plan, further to authorize the Board of Selectmen and Conservation Commission to petition the General Court for such authorization and approval, as may be required under Article Ninety-seven of the Amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to effect the exchange of land proposed herein, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen and Conservation Commission to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments on behalf of the town, upon such terms and conditions as they shall deem be in the best interest of the town, to effect said exchange of real property interest.
Second.
Motion been made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Sixteen by a vote of quarter zero with one abstention.
Any discussion on Article Sixteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Sixteen has moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Seventeen. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding a new section, Section One Seventy-four dash seventeen point one, to read as follows, One Seventy-four dash seventeen point one, raise and replace. No pre-existing non-conforming, single or two-family dwelling structure shall be raised and replaced on any lot unless a special permit issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals authorizes such action. For purposes of this section, raised and replaced shall be defined as a voluntary removal one hundred percent of all pre-existing structural materials and mechanical systems of a structural or structures exclusive of foundations, and a replacement of those materials and systems with new materials and systems in furtherance of the creation of housing. Such a special permit may be granted only if the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that any changes, extensions, or alterations of the pre-existing non-conformities are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than those non-conforming existing prior to the raising of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area on the lot to provide sufficient parking. In no case shall any new non-conformities be created with respect to any replacement structure without the issuance of a variance, or take any other action related there too. Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move to postpone the article indefinitely for the, for further study.
Second.
Motion was made in second to indefinitely postpone. Finance Committee have an issue with that? Finance Commission does not have an issue. Questions or comments on Article Seventeen being indefinitely postponed? Seeing none. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article Seventeen, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous, indefinitely postponed. Article Eighteen. See if the town will vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase an eighty percent low-income restriction on real, on a real property identified as Thirty-seventh Center Street, Mashpee Assessors Map Thirty-six, Parcel Forty-seven D, using general funds, Community Preservation Act, donations and/or sources of revenue, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to prepare and execute such agreements, deeds, and other instruments necessary to effect such transfer upon such terms and conditions as the Selectmen shall deem to be in the interest of the town, or take any other action related there too. This is a petition article.
Oh, yeah. The petition is here.
Is she here?
She's on the right.
She has to come in.
I think there's a microphone back there, or you can come up front. Right behind you, stop.
Hi, good evening. Katie McBrien, Thirty-seventh Center Street in Mashpee, this warrant has been requested to be withdrawn from town meeting.
I can barely hear you.
It wants to definitely postpone.
Are you looking to withdraw the petition?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have?
Second.
Second. All right. Finance Committee has no problem with the withdrawal of the petition? All those in favor of the petition being withdrawn, not that I think I have to take the vote, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Eighteen is withdrawn.
She's got to do nineteen, too.
She's good.
Article Nineteen. Is that, would that be the same request? To withdraw Article Nineteen?
Can you hear me from here? Yes.
Okay.
Katie McBrien, Thirty-seventh Center Street, we are asking that the article be withdrawn as well.
Okay. Because, and a second. Article Eighteen and Nineteen go hand in hand. Eighteen's been withdrawn, Nineteen, Finance Committee has no problem with that? All those in favor of Article Nineteen being withdrawn, say aye?
Aye.
It is withdrawn. Take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
Thank you, everybody.